All right, we'll call the meeting to order that. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any requested changes? Hearing none, I'm gonna deem it approved if I consensus. Um, comments from the chair, John Adams wasn't feeling well tonight, so he's going to miss our meeting. And I also want to just mention about scheduling, the next meeting would be on Christmas Eve, but I think maybe you discussed this at a meeting I didn't attend. Um, I don't intend to call the meeting for December 24th. Um, just skip, I mean in, unless we have anything pressing that we need to have done before the new year and we can't accomplish tonight, then I, I think it's fine to skip the meeting. Um, you know, I would like to get the landscaping recommendations out today if we can. And if we can't, we should discuss at the end of the meeting whether we feel a sense of urgency to meet before the new year on a date other than Christmas Eve. To do that, um, a short special meeting could accomplish that if needed, but I'm hopeful we don't have to do that. Um, so assuming we don't need to do that, our next meeting will be on January 14th. I believe that calendar doesn't show 2019 yet, but.
The 14th.
14th, so I just want to give everyone a heads up. We're gonna, this is our last meeting in 2018 and then we'll meet on January 14th unless we've said otherwise. Um, the other general business or the other comments from the chair I wanted to mention is, Eric Gilbertson from the Design Review Committee and Historic Preservation Commission reached out to me, said that they're working on a proposal for guidelines for changing the bylaws about the design review criteria. And so he, he asked to just have lunch with me and give me an update on where they are. Haven't had that yet, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of a progress report from what I've heard. Um, I've invited Kirby to attend the meeting with me, so anything I forget Kirby can help keep track of. Um, and I, I think that's it, um, for my comments. So moving on, item four, general business. Um, this is where we invite members of the public who want to speak about something that's not on the agenda to offer comments, so I don't know if you have anything.
I'm here to talk about, I guess, the slopes and the landscaping, so which is both on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Do you want to just come introduce yourself and give us your general thoughts first?
Anyways, my name's Will Shabam. Uh, I live here in La Pila and a general contractor. And, um, I've been in front of you before speaking about the slope issue. And, uh, I came tonight just to see, my understanding is that you're sort of trying to fast track the slopes and the landscaping and I see that as on the agenda. And just curious what that, as far as an interim zoning thing, would that mean basically is like there will be, those will be adopted prior to all the other stuff that you're working on?
Yeah, we've identified those as two parts of the zoning bylaws as drafted that have proven administratively challenging. Uh, and so the idea is that we want to prevent as few future permit applications as possible from being impacted by some of those challenges. So if we can put forward a proposal to change the bylaws for the city council to review, then, you know, we want to do that as soon as possible.
Okay, well, that's great. I guess that was my reason I'm here is just like, is that happening? Is it, you know, as a contractor, I've got a few people that are asking me, you know, because then we have projects where it's like a small portion of it's touching 30% slope and, and they're just kind of like, when can we do this? And I was like, well, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's the top item on our agenda tonight and, you know, in general right now.
So basically you'll be voting tonight to send those to.
Well, I can't guarantee anything, but that's, that's what we're hoping.
That's the hope.
We'll be able to vote tonight on the recommendation.
As a contractor and a member of the public, I say, if you can, then that'd be great.
Do you have specific feedback for us to consider?
Um, I mean, I think, you know, I've spoken with Mike about, and I've seen the sort of draft, at least for the slopes and I haven't perused through the landscaping stuff. That's a lot more involved, I think, you know, and I think it all makes sense. You know, and I, and I agree that, you know, yes, having, uh, Development Review Board review anything over 30% and engineers, that makes perfect sense. You know, depending on size and, you know, a lot of the projects that I deal with are very small scale. You know, it's like a 600 square foot cottage that's on a small hill. Um, or just an addition off the back that touches a hill, you know? I'm not putting up condo units on Sibley Ave or something, you know? Um, so I think all in all, it's where you're headed is the right direction. And, uh, just wanted to see when it was going to happen and hear what you had to say about that.
Yeah, so I mean, even once we vote, it would just be a recommendation for city council that would then have to.
Then they would have to adopt it.
Yeah, and I, I believe they'd have to have a formal hearing process. So, you know, even if we, best case scenario, we vote on something tonight, it could still be a couple of months.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, best would be, best, best case scenario would probably be end of January.
Yep. As far as when the potential to say apply for a permit under that interim zoning regulations would be?
Yes, yeah, I mean, it could be end of January, early February.
That's perfect, yeah.
Yeah, my understanding is that once, uh, changes have been warned, then any new applications have to meet the, the modified laws, although they also have to meet the current laws, right, at the same time?
Yeah, it makes a mess of things.
So it's best to avoid that situation.
Yeah, I've been, I've been there before where it's like right before the current regulations and it was like, well, just wait until all these ones are in place. Because then you have to apply under two statutes and they don't want to do that, so. But yeah, so I just wanted to get a sense of like when I could sort of expect to let people know they could do their projects.
Yeah, doing the best we can.
Okay, all righty, well, thank you.
Yeah, and if you have other comments, just raise your hand and we'll invite you back.
I probably won't stick a lot, stick around for too much longer, but I just wanted to get a sense from you and, you know, put in my two cents, so, all right, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so item five, we can jump right into the substantive discussion, uh, reviewing the draft landscaping and screening standards.
So the version that I, um, provide you tonight is, um, has a couple places where there were changes made. So the first one, we had voted at the last meeting to take out on page 358, number three. It's highlighted in yellow. Uh, I shortened that up, John Snell, I let John Snell know that we were talking about this and what the recommendation was that the tree board should adopt something. So he said he was going to put it on their agenda for, um, December and hopefully have it adopted in January. So it's may just be a placeholder, um, but he is looking at the NTA 300s and not the best management practices. So I know, um, Ms. Abbott talked about potentially that they were, the, the recommendation from the creators of these is that it may be that the best management practices would be best, but it sounds like from John Snell that the tree board may be just looking to adopt the specific A300 standards, so.
I, I pulled up A300 during our last meeting and there are many categories. Most of it's not relevant to planting, so it really isn't a portion of these standards. And I think it's specific enough where it says plantings that it's not like we're trying to say that the, all of the standards apply, that we're being, that we're specifying that it's only the planting portions are pertinent.
Yep, yes.
And so can you pull it up on a website? Cause like, no, I'm.
You can look at the listing, but you can't look at the contents.
Right, so, so some, we're going to have a copy of.
Yes, if we adopt these, we will have to have a copy downstairs.
So I guess what I pulled was like the table of contents, which was like 11 different categories and one of which was planting.
Yeah, okay, but you can't see that. Can we scan it and put it online? Probably not.
Oh, he ordered a copy, so I was just gonna, I was contemplating whether I should order it and then I figured I would go and see what their direction was before. I mean, they're relatively cheap, they're like $20 a copy. But I got, they weren't too bad.
So when people ask about this, we can, will you be sending them to the tree board? Or just showing, telling them you want a copy and they can come look at it?
I think, I think what it's going to end up being is we will have a copy and depending on the project and depending on what it is, depends whether we would. A lot of times we have what are called TRC, um, Technical Review Committees. And so when we have the TRCs, applicants come in and we invite everybody in. And I think if we had a project that was going to have a number of plantings, we would just have either Jeff Byer or somebody from the tree board be there to go and answer questions of the specifics of the plantings. If they're not already familiar, as we said, with the A300s, the advantage of those is a professional probably already knows those standards. So that's a little bit of the advantage is they can, at least from the engineering firms when they're printing out their, their plans, they can just go pull up the A300. A300 tree planting?
Yes, here it is.
So that was the first one. Um, I didn't delete it, I just put in a kind of a placeholder that reflected that. So the next set of changes, we're actually on 361, where we get to the total site landscaping, but just above that, which is number seven, and this appears twice, this is just the, for the non-conformities for screening. Um, you'll notice highlighted 3%. Those did say 5%. And so what this says, where, where a site is non-conforming with respect to screening, the applicant shall be required to come into compliance unless the cost of compliance will exceed 3% of the total cost. The reason why I dropped that from 5% to 3% is I was actually looking at our zoning that was in effect from 2006 to 2018 that just, we just replaced. And that one actually had a cap of 3%. So we were trying to guess, we were, I was like, well, some people do 2%, some people do as much as 5%. Well, actually, we used to do 3%, so I just thought I would pick that. We can certainly go back up to 5% if we wanted to, but we wanted to be consistent with what we had been doing for the past 15 years in the past, it was 3%.
Do you have any knowledge as to why 3% was the standard?
Um, a lot of, like I said, a lot of communities have these caps. Um, it just really comes down to what do you do in the case where somebody is coming in to, um, put in a 300, uh, to put in a $10,000 deck on the side of a restaurant to do some outdoor seating. And they have a lot of non-conformities. This just gives us an idea of how we can handle that. We know we want them to come into conformance, but with a $10,000 project, are we, we can make them to do $10,000 worth of landscaping? They may not do the project at all. This just caps it at 3% to go through and say, you're going to have to do, apply 3% of the project cost, whatever it is, to improving that non-conformity. So it will, over time, come into compliance if you're not a project at the time.
And then who designates where that 3% goes in terms of how they, how much they come into compliance?
Uh, in this case, it would, it would depend on whether it's a major site plan or a minor site plan.
So it would just be a review process?
If it's a minor site plan, it would be the zoning administrator. If it's a major site plan, it would go to the Development Review Board.
More bushes, less trees?
I mean, you know, basically, it's kind of a choice like that then?
Yeah, I mean, when you're looking at cost, it's really going to come down to, you know, what, what is effectively, and this is really talking about screening, so in a lot of cases, this is talking about, somebody's building a deck, but they have a dumpster that was never screened. So we're going to kind of know where it's going to go. You're just going to have to, you know, you have to apply at least $300 towards that, that requirement.
Um, I don't know enough about what it costs to do landscaping. How much screening is $300 to get you on the $10,000 deck?
Uh, maybe not a, a ton, but it's, as we said, we're looking at a percentage of the cost that's going to be going on top of that. Um, you're going to be able to get some, some work done for that, but, like I said, it's, it's, uh, just an overall cost.
I think landscaping is fairly expensive, isn't it?
I think it depends what you're.
I mean, I imagine you could get at least a couple of shrubs planted for $300.
But a lot of projects we get are, you know, up to $100,000 worth of stuff. So as I said, it could be, it, we can do whatever number that you'd like. Um, with what we, the issue we have right now is we don't have any regulations to help us with non-conformities. So if somebody can, comes in with a deck and we're left with, I guess.
They're going to come into compliance.
Yeah, if you've got $50,000 worth of landscaping needs, you're going to have to do 50,000. And so we just needed to have some way of, of regulating how we're going to do it. This is a typical way of doing it, 3%, 5%. You can make whatever percentage number you want.
Do we want to set some minimum? I mean, you know, a small project, but could have a significant non-conformance.
What are the advantages and drawbacks of having a higher percentage set aside or a lower percentage?
Um.
I mean, so one would probably, having a lower percentage would mean that you could have more development or infill? Is that accurate? I, I don't feel like I understand this well enough to understand what the decision is.
So this one is, yeah, this one's looking at non-conformities from the standpoint of,
Screening.
Strictly with the, the screening. And I think total landscaping has a similar 3%, except they have an additional requirement which we will go over.
So maybe we should look at these all together, if we can get through all the changes you.
Yeah, so the two 3%, so on the next page on 362, the same provision applies at topic. If this one has an A, because we also need to address where a site is non-conforming with respect to impervious cover, the applicant, and the applicant demonstrates that the non-conform, that as a result of the non-conformity, the site cannot reasonably meet the total landscaping requirement, the Development Review Board may waive some or all the total landscaping requirements. So this just puts a second out in there because we have sites that you might be in urban center too. And I can think of a couple of them that are 100% impervious. And therefore, you're going to come in, you're going to have to do a project. We're going to say, you gotta do 5%, 3%, whatever the number is. And they're going to look out and say, I have no percent. I don't have any landscaping place I can put. Um, so either I'm going to have to tear up or tear down buildings or I'm going to need a waiver. So this just gives an, an out for the Development Review Board to waive some or all the landscaping requirements based on the fact that there's just no place to put it. But other than that, the, the percentage amount of money to spend is, is still, tends to, tends to be in there. And I think both of these, whether it's for the screening or whether it's for the total landscaping, would probably have the same percentage.
Um, so in the tax world, because we're talking about like a chilling effect of something, like, there's a lot of studies out there showing like a modest sales tax of 6%. Doesn't really have much of a chilling effect. It's like, there's like a lot of research out there on that. And that's kind of how I'm thinking of this, is like 3%, 5%. Does the increase 5, the 5% is higher, would that have a chilling effect on projects? And, yeah, I think if it is similar as like a sales tax, I don't really think it necessarily would have a chilling effect. My point of view.
Yeah, I mean, probably not. I mean, we could, I mean, in theory, you could go through and say that all non-conformities have to be erased. I mean, legally, we could just go through and say, you've got to bring them, you know? If you're going to get a permit, you got to come into compliance. But we get a lot of smaller projects and somebody says, I'm going to put a new propane tank in. We're like, great, you got to put in $5,000 worth of landscaping. Then we'll give you your permit for the propane tank.
No, I understand the need for it. I think we're all convinced about that. It's just a matter of what percentage is appropriate. And, um, my first thought was, oh, I don't want to discourage some of the development that we want to see in like the urban center where there's not a lot of screening or landscaping. But then on the other hand, we want to have development that is aesthetically pleasing and contributes to, um, good design and it's a whole part of it. So it, it does make sense to at least have some percentage set aside for this. I like that. And I, interesting what you're saying, a chilling effect. Barb, you look like you're ready.
No, I was just wondering, when you were saying that, are there other, um, regulations, criteria that they have to meet other than landscape screening? Um, you know, in terms of mechanicals outside of building?
If they're all, if what they are putting in is a new propane tank or new dumpster, they would have to screen that dumpster. This 3% doesn't let them out of that.
Okay.
This 3% is just, you're putting in something that's separate, a deck. And now the question comes in, we noticed that you're also non-conforming with respect to your screening of your X. And the question is, do we make that happen?
But screening is not just restricted to landscape?
No, it's not, which is why we don't worry about it. If it's 100% impervious, well, then you might have to put up a fence.
Okay.
So on the previous page, screening materials can be landscape buffers, but they can also be fences and walls, they can be berms. And that's, those are the three options that you have for screening materials. And then what has to be screened are parking lots, utility service areas, and building mounted equipment.
Other thoughts?
And I'm comfortable with the 5%. I don't think that's that bad. I just thought I would point out the fact that previously we had 3% as a number.
It's good to know, it's just.
We're adding something in. Currently, we have nothing. And if we bring it in, there's a certain sales pitch you can give to go through and say, well, we're just going back to the way it was in, in that. But if we want to go beyond it, that's, as you said, I don't think the difference between $300 worth of landscaping or $500 worth of landscaping is really going to go and take somebody's deck project out.
All right, what do folks think, 3% or 5%?
I guess I probably agree with Kirby. I do, I could say that more definitively.
So increase it to something 5%?
Go to 5%?
5%?
I didn't, I suggested that.
Yeah, I didn't think there was a clear.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's, yeah.
Let me restate.
You make the point.
I think 5%, after hearing Kirby's valuable contribution, I think 5% does not, does not seem like a too harsh a hurdle to put in. And landscaping seems like a, you know, even if it's $200 worth. Landsc, more landscaping seems like a positive thing. So that's my take on it at this point.
Aaron, comfortable with that?
Uh, just a quick, uh, question, like you were saying, I mean, can you kind of give me just a, a ballpark, like what's the range in terms of the price of these projects that we're talking about? I mean, clearly, there's like a $10,000 deck, but is that the norm? Are we talking?
Most of our permits, we get a couple hundred permits a year. So most of them are going to be relatively small permits for changing windows in the historic district or, you know, a lot of smaller projects in, in those areas. And then from there, it ramps up to, you know, $5 million for French block and, you know, some of these bigger projects. But some of them are going to be exempt because of being in urban center one or whatever. But we can, most of those big projects are already covering themselves on different points. So it's, it's really how we handle the small ones.
Yeah, I, I just feel like if there's not a lot of difference on the margins in terms of the small projects, which it sounds like it is, and the larger ones are going to be covered with different areas anyway, then, um, this isn't going to really touch those bigger projects so much. 5% is probably fine. But frankly, I mean, this is sort of my first blush at it, so I don't report to be.
We just, we, even, even us, we, we make this, we put the, the other, this is, this is fixing the previous proposal because we hadn't even thought of this until we started doing them.
Yeah.
So it sounds like there's a consensus for 5% for screening and total landscaping, total site landscaping?
Um, I did have, I was given one question this afternoon related to that on, is there a project that is just too small? Should we have a, a minimum project?
Right, that's what Barb said.
I was thinking more on the other, from the other side though, a minimum amount for landscaping.
Yeah, you were thinking minimum amount for landscaping and the other one is, the other side is if somebody's doing a $750 project, are we requiring? I don't even think that would be $75, $7.50. Landscaping, I mean, is there, is there a floor to some of these where we just go and say, look, if, if landscaping is less than this, there's two options. One would be if it's less than this, you have to at least do X amount, which I think was what Barb was thinking. Or the other option is if it's less than this amount, we just, we're not going to ask you to do landscaping if it's, if the landscaping requirement is under a certain amount.
What's an example of a $750 project that would be known or?
We'll get small projects that might come in. I mean, certain changes of use might just need a sign. Might just be a sign permit that'll come through. There's really no other changes and so we're left with a, eh, what does that mean?
Plant some flowers around the sign.
We don't want to screen your sign by nature of it being a sign.
But you could screen the base of the sign, yeah, but.
For $7, I mean, that's pretty, not a big flower.
It's a small pot.
Play out some seeds.
That doesn't even put it in the ground.
Um, I think I'm comfortable with an exemption for small projects, but I don't know.
Seems like it's a de facto exemption where it's such a de minimis amount on those small projects that, I mean, Mike, you're not going out and, on, in the field and enforcing, right? So.
I mean, technically, we really shouldn't be writing rules that we have no intentions of, you know, going and saying, well, we'll just ignore that because I, I'm not going to be enforcing that, so. Um, I mean, so, but we should just put a de minimis where landscaping requirement, where the landscaping requirement is less than $100 or?
50?
I was thinking, 300. I, I mean, I, I think that, I mean, the only hesitation I have with any of these numbers is that I don't have a good sense of, I mean, what it costs for a landscape professional just to even come out and sort of assess. I would assume that's. I just don't know what $100 gives you.
Right, so if you have $100 and you need to plant something and you need to follow the NTA 300 standard and you're just one person that doesn't, right, you can't hire someone to do it.
Right, that's, I, it's sort of, there's some, yeah. I'm thinking it's probably got to be in the $300 to $500 range before anybody even takes any of that seriously. We, we make a guess, I just don't know.
I mean, you could put a substantial amount of landscaping in one specific area for $300. You know, six bushes, you know, small, enough to shield something. So if, you know, if we want to set a minimum, I think it's going to have to be small.
The point I was getting at is like, I don't think Mike's going to be out there and say, that bush only is worth $80, not 100, you know, that kind of thing where.
Usually they, we're going to get that in the application stage. People are going to come in and go and say, what are you going to do? And we're going to come in and say, you know, you, you need to be doing something. What are you going to be doing for, for this amount?
And so if it's, if we don't have a de minimis exemption, then people will say, well, $7, I'm going to buy a plant.
But then you have to plant it following the NTA 300.
And it has to be replaced if it dies because that's a requirement under any landscaping requirement, so you're.
You give them the book.
So let's do a de minimis waiver for what, like, um, I mean, less than $100?
$100, I guess, yeah.
At least it's a number and if it comes back that it's not high enough, we can always come back and go and say, look, we're getting a bunch of these that are just silly. Or, and then we can always come back, but at least $100 gives us something. There's something there.
All right, everyone comfortable with that?
All right. So, uh, the next, so as we get into the total site landscaping, um, I made a few tweaks to the administrative rules.
Sorry, where are you?
Where are you?
Um, still, uh, same page, 361.
3203.j.
Yep, now we're into .j, the last of the total site landscaping. Where we got stuck last time. So we had some questions that came up. Previously, this had been talking about forested areas and we had some discussion about whether we should or shouldn't be regulating forested areas. So I tried to do a little bit more massaging on this one. And the riparian rules talk about naturally wooded vegetation. So rather than create a new term of art, I just grabbed the old one and. So, rather than create a new term of art, I just grabbed the old one and replaced it to make this one say... So, this is for calculating planting area, where an applicant demonstrates that naturally wooded vegetation is on the parcel, is proximate to the development site, and furthers the purposes outlined in section three two oh three point A. So, that's the purposes of this section. The naturally wooded vegetation may count towards landscaping requirement on a two to one basis. For example, retaining two square feet of naturally forested cover or riparian habitat will count towards one square foot of landscaped area. So, this puts the burden onto the applicant that they would have to demonstrate that it is on their parcel, is proximate to the development site, because some of these development sites can be rather big, and we don't want somebody counting something that's clearly, the purposes of the landscaping requirement is to improve the aesthetics and to screen bad things and blah, 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 there are four requirements. Well, if it's up on the back of the hill, it's not going to do any of those four things. So, this kind of gives a little bit of room for us to count that, but at the same time, they don't just automatically get credit for everything. Perennial plantings may be used...
Hold up, hold up, that, that, the point you're making there, where there's some discretion, administrative discretion, you're, you're packing all that into the "may" that's there, right? Is that something we should make a little more explicit?
Well, and that is proximate to the development site is arbitrary, is something, right?
It's, yeah, it's a little bit...
Whether it's proximate to the development site or not is up to interpretation.
If we think we know how we could grapple and wrap that in, I mean, we talked about proximate with other accessory structures and some other things. I mean, there'll be a certain amount of gray when it's the administrative officer making that call, but I think it could also be appealed to the DRB if somebody believes the administrative officer has said that's not proximate and great, can appeal to the DRB and...
Just, yeah, if you think that your office will exercise discretion on this "may", then I think maybe we should have a standard to apply. But if you don't think that in practice you'll end up doing that, then I'd find a way.
Well, I guess if the applicant demonstrates, I guess the key is that should probably say shall. If, if we're looking at that, that "may" that's later in there, purpose outlined in section three, the woody vegetation shall be counted. Because the assumption being that if the applicant demonstrates it, the administrative officer and the DRB always has to make the determination of whether or not it has been demonstrated. If you demonstrate it's proximate, if you demonstrate it's on your parcel, and if you demonstrate it meets these four purpose statements, we can count it on a two to one basis. And if we don't, it's because we're saying it's not. Think that covers it?
So, is proximate to the development site, I'm just wondering, I mean, do we have a range, or, I mean, Stephanie's point is well taken, that it's a little bit vague, so...
It's a little bit vague, but I think if you, if you're looking at that proximate in relation to the purpose statement, because you have to meet all of them, so it's proximate, but it has to enhance the appearance of the built environment as viewed from a public vantage point, create shade along sidewalks, walkways, parking lots, provide landscape buffer between residential and non-residential uses, screening uses and development that creates, that, screen the land uses and development that create visual clutter and distraction. So, I think if you kind of know what the purpose is...
So, maybe the, we could change it to...
Or maybe the proximate doesn't have to be there at all, if you can meet these four requirements.
Yeah. I mean, you could say, is proximate to the development site so that it furthers the purposes, or something like that. But, yeah, maybe we could just take it out.
Take out the proximate.
Yeah.
You, if you look at, if you look at thirty-two oh three A.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's, if it's, if it's, if it's remote from the site, then, yeah, you wouldn't be able to meet those.
It's going to be difficult to meet one of those four requirements.
Yeah.
I mean, how big a project, how, a site are we talking about? I mean, if we have a several acre site, it's possible that they could meet these criteria and still not have it be close to the building.
Well, it's the development, yes, the development site that, which can be...
The site or the, the site of the development.
Yeah, we, and we had this discussion of whether or not we wanted to define site. Because we talk about site plans, we talk about sites, and sites and parcels tend to be the same when they're small. I mean, you have a quarter acre site, it pretty much is the whole entire parcel. The question is, at what point, should, should we have a definite, different definition for site when it's something that's less than the size of the parcel? And that was a question that administratively downstairs, we have been kind of chewing on a little bit to try to come up with. Should we have a separate definition of site?
Thinking about the distillery project, you know, if there was a landscaped area at one far end of the project, I mean, is it possible that it could potentially meet these four criteria and still not be proximate to the disturbed area? I don't know.
I've got a little movement in here. I think that, I'm fine moving in here. I think it's going to be a, got called to some degree. If it's a nine acre parcel and they're doing a little bit of work over here, and they're trying to count something away on the other side, I think there's a...
Yeah, and I think, I think that would be a good one. Think of timber frame, a nine acre parcel, and there's riparian buffer on the river on the back of this nine acre parcel. All their work is being done up by Route twelve. Can they count that riparian buffer on the river at the back of the nine acres towards their landscaping requirement? And my thought was, well, it's not really proximate to the project. The project is in the front three acres, but it's on the parcel, and so that was where I was kind of, that was the one I was kind of rolling around in my head.
So, if we left proximate on, in there, that would at least give you a basis?
It, it would give us a basis to say no in a certain, certain cases where somebody wants to count, you know.
So, I, I just, I'm going to, I don't mean to be contrarian, but I just disagree with that. I don't see that the proximate verbiage is needed because you have the purposes outlined in thirty-two oh three. If there, if the woody natural vegetation is not proximate to the built environment, it's not going to be able to enhance the appearance of the built environment, which is the first prong of thirty-two oh three A. It won't be able to create shade along sidewalks and walkways. It won't be able to do the things that thirty-two oh three A is, is aimed doing. And I just feel like if I'm the review board, I'm looking at, if I'm weighing an applicant's demonstration of fulfilling those requirements, and then you add an undefined term such as proximate to the development without any standard for me to evaluate that, it just creates another level of uncertainty where I feel like if, you know, the board is going to be given discretion to determine whether or not those thirty-two oh three A purposes are met by the application, I, I think it should just be enough, but I just don't know what, I just don't know what a undefined term of proximate to the development site adds to that.
The, the only case I can think of where something might not be proximate to the site, but, but actually fulfill thirty-two oh three is, is number three there, where it says providing a buffer between residential and non-residential, which arguably, the, the timber homes, natural vegetation's a buffer between that and the, the development and the river. So, you could say that it meets A three here, but maybe still isn't proximate enough.
Sure, and I think that's, again, I think that's a call that the board can make if an applicant tries to make that demonstration. They can, they can make that call. I think that the proximate question just adds another variable that kind of muddles the analysis. But that's, that's just, I, I, I can see the other side of the coin, too, don't get me wrong. But I, I feel like the thirty-two oh three A standards give at least some quantifiable and objective standard by which the board can evaluate an applicant's demonstration of a, you know, counting the land, counting the woody areas.
I could go either way. I mean, I'm a proponent of getting rid of proximate, proximity is part of it.
What do we got?
Yeah, my, my initial point, and sorry for bringing this up and getting us into the weeds on this, was really that I think if you keep proximate in there, there's a, possibly, if you, if you make a decision based on the proximal language, you could end up getting into some legal trouble with it. I don't feel that strongly either.
Then they can apply to DRB, right?
They can apply to DRB, that you make a big, big decision and they're...
And they're the ones who make the decision ultimately, so.
And they could also get in legal trouble trying to interpret and apply approximately.
So many elements of interpretation, but, you know, all of, you know, eight, one through four are interpretation elements.
Yeah, I think that's, that's probably enough for them to handle.
So, if we take out proximate, then we take out the possibility that there's all these arguments about it that we don't intend to ever happen, or leave it and see what happens.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I, that same argument could be used for, for the purpose, the, the elements raised in the purpose as well. So, it's, it's definitely a matter of interpretation.
What's easier for your staff while looking at it?
I, I mean, clearly, from, from the decision-making standpoint, if you don't, if we don't have to make that determination of whether it's proximate, then that's one less decision we have to make. I was just... If we find, we get ourselves caught in a position where we're approving things that we don't want to because we don't have that, we can always come back and either define that term, or, as we said, we're, we're approving something that doesn't exist. So, anything is an improvement over what we have. And I think, like I said, I was just trying to capture a little bit of those projects where people come in with the big, you know, some Malone properties on Gallison Hill that they've got, you know, a big industrial building up front, and then they own another fifteen acres of woods in back. And I know the question's going to come up of, well, doesn't that just meet all my landscaping requirements? It's like, well, but I guess now we've got the, the basis in there. Well, if you can demonstrate three two oh, three A is met, then sure, you can count that.
But do we want them to count that? I mean, is that the ultimate result that we want to see happen?
Well, the purpose of our landscaping standards are to implement those four standards. So, all of these standards that we've been reviewing are to achieve those four things. If there's something, if there's a fifth thing we should be adding, then I guess that would be the next question.
Well, no, I mean, I guess it seems like it's splitting hairs, that potentially, they could argue that it meets those four criteria, but it's still halfway across, you know, it's still acre away from where they're developing. So, do we want the landscape standards to apply to the area that is being developed?
Well, of course, and I think that, that the argument isn't about whether we want those to apply or not. The argument is about whether this achieves it with or without the term proximate.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I guess, I can think of all kinds of different ways to get around it, so.
But if it's, if it's a nine acre parcel and it's all on the back acre, is it enhancing the appearance of the built environment as viewed from the public vantage point?
Right.
Well, maybe the public vantage point...
I mean, it may, it may be, if you think about the State House, it may be yes, because that back hill is all forested and acts as a forested screen for the back, if it happens to be flat.
I don't think anyone would call that development clutter.
Yeah, but it's, but it's, well, it's whether it's meeting, it, it, when it comes to the next one, we're, we're talking about the total landscaping requirement.
I think for a lot of them, they're not going to meet that first one.
All right, so without taking an official vote on this, how, raise your hand, how many people want to strike the, the proximate aspect of this?
I mean, I guess it'd be fine, yeah.
And how many people want to keep it? Two people want to keep it?
No, I'm just like, I don't, I'm not sure, to be honest.
I think I talked myself into, we can cover it without that.
All right.
All right, Barb, you?
Goes down.
Do you want an official vote?
No, I don't care.
Talking with the dissent.
Really, but I, I do, you know, I do have to say that I constantly think about these different ways that I could get around them in terms of site design, you know, so it's sort of like, oh, yeah, I could, I could easily do this and, and the, you know, the natural area would be half a mile away, but, um, anyway.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look and see how it, yeah, we'll look and see how it plays out in, in the reality.
Yeah, in real life.
And sometimes we just have to see how the DRB comes down on a couple of these, because if the DRC, DRB starts being very consistent in, no, we're not going to count that for X, Y, and Z. Or we'll count only a portion in the front of it, because yes, these first fifty feet are actually making a nice backdrop to the restaurant or whatever, but the last seven hundred and fifty feet of it are not providing any benefit, and therefore, we're not going to give you any credit for those. But we'll see where the DRB plays it.
Okay, so here's the change I see is, is proximate to the development site is going to be strong.
Yes.
And then, um, "may" is going to be changed to "shall".
Yeah. Although I'd be curious to see where some of the other DRB ones are, but we'll make those.
But what's that?
Oh, I was just trying to think of, occasionally, it's written where the DRB may approve where the applicant demonstrates. I don't think, but, well, I'll, I'll, I'll put it as "shall", because I think, actually, if, if the applicant demonstrates, I think legally, if the applicant does demonstrate it, we are kind of obliged to give them that.
But the decision of whether they've adequately demonstrated that is...
Demonstrate that is up to the others. So, B, moving us quickly into the next one, B actually is just moved up from later on. I noticed that we talk about perennial plantings, and then we have these administrative rules up top, and it really should have been part of these administrative rules. So, perennial plantings, when it comes to total landscaping, if you're planting perennials, they can be counted on a one square foot basis. And then, C, I added in, because we've had a number of these questions that have come up, and I think this will help clean some of the stuff, too. To be counted as an existing tree or shrub for the purposes of this subsection, trees and shrubs must be healthy and have suitable planting area to support its long-term viability. Unmanaged or unmaintained portions of a site shall not count as landscaping unless the area meets the provisions of three two oh three J one, which we just talked about. Invasive species shall never be counted towards total landscaping. So, the purpose of this is, we have had people who've come in with applications, and you'll have a tree growing sideways out of the foundation, and then kind of turn and kind of grow up, and they're like, well, there's, I got a tree. That counts as my tree, and we're like, well, yeah, it is a tree, but, you know. Or it's, or it's just brambles with a bunch of junk in there, and you're just like, is that, is that really, should that really be counting towards our existing landscaping if it's not really landscaped? If, you know, and you can, if you drive and look around, you can see between buildings on Berry Street and different things, you'll go and see that just in between the buildings is just grown up scrub. And does that really count as counting these things out and go through and say, I found seven maples in there, so?
If nothing else, maybe it would encourage people to maintain them, the ones that are there, you know?
Oh, yeah, so that's the point, was we would be able to at least, if we go and say, if you want to count as existing, do something to kind of make it qualify. We aren't obligated to take your tree as a tree.
My, my other thought is with, yeah, with ash borer, in a few years, we're going to have trees that are not healthy.
Yep.
They're not going to count anymore.
Ash bores or another common tree.
And that's going to get people to actually replace those trees, which might be a good thing.
Yep, trees of paradise, um, there are a couple of other trees.
Sorry, I have a quick name, about thirty-two oh three J one, C. Quick question, the second to last sentence, unmanaged or unmaintained portions of the site shall not count as landscaping. And the last sentence is invasive species shall never be counted. Why is there different verbiage? If one is shall not count as landscaping, the other one is shall never be counted towards total landscaping, is there a reason why there's diff...
Probably should say not.
Just shall, shall not count towards...
Be counted towards landscaping. It's being, yes, I was being overly...
We lost a couple lawyers, so we needed to get one back.
Sorry, sorry, I just know, I...
In relationship to that, Mike, so then they need, the owner needs to go into their area and determine if they're invasive species within a, a forested area?
No, it, no, not, I mean, if, if they were doing, if they're going for the forested area. This is just for a site, and we, we'll get a number of them that will come in that are just, uh, even some of these Berry Street, Elm Street projects that, you know, it's just a small two, twenty thousand square foot lot, and there's just a section of, of something that's in, in brambles, and this is questions whether they can count those as trees. But as they start mapping them out to go and tell us, you know, we're going to ask them, do you, you know, do you meet your tree requirement? And if they go through and say, yeah, I've got a tree here, I've got a tree here, and I've got... say, yeah, I've got a tree here, I've got a tree here, and I've got two trees over here, and we can go and ask them, what, what are they? Because first of all, we need to know, because we have to determine, is this a large tree, medium tree, or a small tree? And if they go and tell us, well, that's a X tree, we can go through, we, we can look, because we've got the list, or know that, well, a tree of paradise is an invasive species and therefore doesn't count.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have a lot of invasives, but, so we have a clear designation of a list of invasive species that they can reference in the zoning.
The state, and it's referenced in here.
Okay, so the state list is referenced in something.
And I don't, this doesn't apply to the natural woody vegetation, that's when you're, this is when you're specifically counting exact trees. So if you have invasive in your natural woody area, you're not going to, this doesn't apply to that.
Go and survey your two acres of woody site.
Yeah.
I'm hoping we can get through this in five more minutes, or we have an hour to talk about slopes.
All right.
Because we're going to need it.
So, just skipping to the bottom of that, you'll see number four, we already talked about this previously, so I will make the changes that we have approved.
The percentage.
The percentage and the wording of any, of anything else, so we'll make those. So the last thing that comes up is back up on number two, which was what we left at. There used to be a two and a three.
Yep.
And the two talked about lots less than one acre, three talked about lots more, and John made comments that, that were absolutely correct, it really wasn't, I didn't have it right, I made mistakes. And so I spent a lot of time, again, playing around with a bunch of more examples, and what I've put in here is a more complex one, but there are a number of ways of trying to get us to a number that works. But one possibility is to go back and move to a factor of, if we apply a factor of point oh three three, which you see is the requirement just for the 90%, and we just, if we just took that out and just said, look, we're just going to apply a factor of point zero three three, it actually kind of works through all the districts. It does apply just a minimum, and you're looking at it as, as a minimum, it works at, no matter what the size of the parcel is. And I ran this all the way out to projects like Tractor Supply, which is a 20,000 square foot building with a 20,000 square foot outdoor storage area with another 60,000 square feet of parking. That one didn't have enough landscaping, but I think all of us could go out there and go and say, it didn't have enough landscaping, but the biggest thing it didn't have was landscaping, enough shading for the parking, so if it simply met its parking shading requirement, it would meet the point oh three requirement. The other thing I looked at was, we all kind of thought the shading requirement worked okay, so I converted that to our new system of impervious cover, that comes out point zero four two, so that's not too bad, you know? We're starting to see numbers all in the same area here of, of stuff that, that tends to work. The number that didn't work, when I calculated out our current zoning, which, you know, has absurdly too much landscaping, which is why we're redoing these rules, it came out to point one nine, so you start seeing, okay, well, now that's an upper limit, point one nine, we don't want to be up that high. So we played, I played around with a lot of different examples from Tractor Supply, Caladonia Spirits, and looking at some of them and kind of giving an eye to them as to whether or not they really could have, like, Caladonia Spirits, I think we recognized could have had a little bit more landscaping, it would have been fairly easy to have provided more landscaping. And really started to come up with that the point oh three three would work as a, across the board for any of them, just get the impervious cover multiplied by point oh three three, that's the amount of landscaping you, you could meet. In certain cases, it might be a little bit on the low side, so the other options, which you see here in number two, the most complex way of doing this is, we looked at, you have the building size, and you have your other impervious cover like parking lots. We already know the parking lot requirement gets up to point oh four, and that kind of works, so we could just go through and say, structures have to meet this, and the other landscaping has to meet the other number, and this, this just goes and says the other parking lot would be point oh three three, so if you've got a parking lot that's basically smaller than 10 parking spaces, you're at point oh three three, as soon as you hit 10 parking spaces, you're at point oh four two. I don't have to say that here because the previous requirement would push it up there. And then the buildings would add, would go from point oh three three to point oh six two five to point oh eight six, and then everything else would be at point one. That gets a little steep, so that's kind of the high end, now you're, we're requiring a more robust amount of landscaping. If you went up to point one, we could stop it at point oh eight six if we wanted to. So I was just trying to get some ideas out there for, for how the simplest and straightest is just go for the point oh three three, and that's the quick and clean way of, of doing it. It works for the small ones, and it works for the big ones.
Are we aware of any other cities that have different factors or different approaches for structures versus impervious surface?
Not really, I haven't seen, some of the issues that have come up with landscaping is that a lot of times it is a strictly subjective standard. They will do a more of a performance band, standard approach, most communities would go with, take your purpose statement, pull those out, stick them in as performance standards, and go and say, you have to demonstrate this. The problem with this, with that is, we're trying to have a lot of our stuff be administrative, so we really want to start to be a little more objective, a little less subjective in, in our rules, so that way our administrators can go through and process, because most of our applications, you know, we get a couple hundred applications a year, 12, 15 of them go to the DRB, you know, so if we send site plan and say, all site plans have to go to the DRB, then we're sending a lot to the DRB to evaluate the reasonable person standards and the subjectiveness, so. We tried, as we said, we tried some of the way Brandy's been proposing to do it, we think this new way kind of tweaks what she's doing, puts it on a better foundation, because we're linking it to the size of the buildings, at least the footprint, and the size of the parking areas, because by linking it to impervious cover, we've got a more impervious cover, the more landscaping you need. Seems like a pretty reasonable.
Please, we talked about the distillery, we all got that example, because I think a lot of us, it helps to talk about these examples for us, because we can imagine how many trees in acreage, but it's hard to take the math and get that.
Yeah.
So, so tell us what, like, what we're looking at now, how that would look compared with what we discussed last time with the distillery project, where we went this a dead done?
Were they meeting the other requirements, too? Were they meeting, now they updated ones?
They didn't have to meet any requirements previously, so we were kind of taking it because they were under the old zoning.
So was it, but would they, would they have met, I guess, is my question? So would they have already had to add more for parking or for screening?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's part of it, too, I think. If we, if we look at that site and say, this wasn't enough, well, this is in addition to those if it's lower, right?
No, these aren't in addition, these are the total landscaping.
Well, they're not met this already.
Yep, you may meet your total landscaping requirement before you get here, it's, this was kind of intended as, in our current zoning, total landscaping is actually kind of at the top or in the middle, and we kind of wanted to make sure it was clear, we put it at the bottom, we relocated all those standards to go through and say, we've got screening, street trees, parking, and screening are the three requirements, but each one of them has exemptions, so you might get all the way through there and you don't get to go and say, yes, the landscaping, no, you do have a minimum, you have to at least meet this much, you may meet it through your street trees, you may meet it through.
Right, that's what I meant, in addition to the, right, so if you've met the other things and you're already over this amount, you don't have to do it.
Then you won't have to do anything.
Did this end up applying to the distillery project, or did it, was it met already from this parking and other?
And it sounds like they, if they had been under this rule, they would have had to do more before this.
They were adopted under old zoning, but.
Oh.
But if they were under this.
But if they were, they would have failed our new zoning.
We have old, we have older zoning, old zoning, and.
Yeah, we have old zoning, current zoning, and proposed zoning.
But, right, but if they'd been under this rule, not including this, they already would have had to do more, because they wouldn't have met the parking requirements.
Yeah, they would have, yeah, they would not have had enough parking shading, and I think, looking at the site plan, we would have agreed, at least as planning commissioners, that it would have been reasonable for them to have provided more shading for that parking lot of that size.
But this will give them, would give them a numerical number to use to say, okay, this is the area that needs to be provided as a minimum, and here's where it should be, some of it should be shading the parking, some of it should be in other locations.
Yep, they will meet the, they'll, they'll go through and meet those first three requirements, and then we will get to the total landscaping, where we add everything up and see if they've met, and if they're still, if they're deficient, we'll have to add some more parking, or add some more landscaping in one of these six or seven places that are identified.
So when you say these factors, you sort of work them out in your head and they make sense, what does that mean exactly? Like, you feel like you look at examples and they have, I'm just trying to grasp what that, that they don't have too much of a burden of landscaping, but.
In, in certain cases, I look at a project, so some of the new ones, I looked at Hunger Mountain Co-op, Caladonia Spirits, we had looked at before, 184 Elm Street, we'd looked at before, Tractor Supply was a new one that I looked at.
What were the, I guess, what were the criteria?
Buddy's Burgers.
Was the question.
Yeah, thanks.
For all of these ideas, as, as we try to kind of flesh out these ideas, which numbers seem to make sense? So what I would do is, let's say, if I happen to be working on an idea of like, maybe we do a point oh six for the building and a point oh three for the parking lot, I can, I would run them through Hunger Mountain Co-op and go and say, well, what did the total come out to, and what did they plant, and do I think, in my personal opinion, do I think there was enough landscaping there? In some cases, if it comes out, it's like, it was, they were, they would be a little bit short, or it's unclear whether those are medium trees or large trees, if those were large trees, then they would count, and they would meet it, if they're medium trees, then they're not, but, so that's kind of how I looked at them. Like, Hunger Mountain Co-op has 30,000 square feet of impervious, they have 22 medium trees and nine small trees. Now we can start adjusting the things, is, is that enough landscaping in that parking lot? It doesn't count any of their riparian buffer that they have along the river, just.
So would that meet the total landscaping as we have in this proposed version?
In certain cases, I'd have to, if it's I don't hear this calculator.
So I think, I mean, Ariane's getting at it, which is, there's two things to consider here, there's administratives of implementing these rights, which is very important, and we leave it to you to determine the best way to do that, but then there's a substantive question of how much landscaping is the appropriate amount, and so in testing your administrative formula, you know, we kind of want to know, like, how did you arrive, how did you settle on this particular factor, what were you looking at?
Yeah.
And you're using your professional judgment in determining what was the adequate amount of coverage and landscaping, and that's perfectly acceptable, but we just want to make sure we're having a discussion about it.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, and it's, it's hard somewhat, I mean, like, in this case here, we're talking about Hunger Mountain Co-op, 30,000 square feet of impervious cover, if we just did point oh three three for everything, that means they would have to do 990 square feet of landscaping, which, for everyone who's not up to speed with what we're doing, a large tree would be worth 100, a medium tree would be worth 49, a small tree's worth 25, shrubs are worth six, or eight, or 10, perennial landscaping is one to one.
So they would have more than enough, because you said nine large trees and.
They would have enough, they have 22 medium, 22 medium trees and nine small trees, which is 1,303, so they would have met the minimum requirement. Now, that doesn't, they may have been way over, if we looked at it from the standpoint of parking, we may have said, well, for parking, you actually needed to have more and bigger trees, they may have been required to have 1,500 square feet of medium trees, something depending on how big.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing, because again, I'm trying to conceptualize, and sorry, Barb, if I can jump there.
No, that's, that's.
But, but a point oh three three sounds like a small enough number for the total tree, that it's, it sounds like it's going to usually be caught by parking before it gets to that, it sounds like point, what, what I'm understanding is that point zero three three is so lenient that it's probably not going to catch anything that's not already caught by the other standards, does that seem right?
For certain projects, if we're talking about Hunger Mountain Co-op and Tractor Supply, we're talking about places that have big parking lots, so absolutely, there are a lot of there, if they meet their parking lot requirement, they're probably meeting most of their total landscaping requirement. In fact, I would almost guarantee they are, because the parking lot, its landscape is required at point oh four two, so if you have a lot of parking, and our requirement for total is point oh three three, then you're going to probably meet it all, but Buddy's Burgers has no parking, it's just the building, they don't even own their parking lot, that parking lot's owned by the Butters, so when they want to put a deck on their building, and I calculated theirs, theirs comes out to needing 75 square feet of landscaping, and they have some small squares in the front, they actually have one crab apple tree, so we're like, all right, look, you put a crab apple tree here, you put a crab apple tree there, and you have some U's, which they do have, you could meet 75 square feet pretty easily in, in that, and that's, that's, that's about as urban as you're going to get, you know, probably 90 plus percent coverage on that parcel, and they still, they still could meet it, so it works for really small ones, the point oh three three, but, as I said before, when you get up to some of these middle sized ones, it can be, it'll probably be met through other things like parking, and it'll be a little bit on the low side, but then when we get to these really big sites, that was where we were coming to this point, where we kind of have this, it's not a linear thing, as the lot, sites get really big, it becomes really easy to meet a requirement, and you also have a lot of these extra existing trees, and you're like, oh, I need seven trees and I've got three acres, which seven trees would you like me to pick? And that was where some of these ones just come up for the other extreme of the really big lots. And then I think these middle ones are where we may get, Hunger Mountain Co-op. So that was my thought, and as I, as I said, some of these, I, the numbers I pulled together, we had done the parking lot calculations, and point oh four two is how that factors, you know, so I think we kind of have a feel, it just depends a little bit of, you know, if we want to have a minimum, here's some ideas to go with, point oh three three, point oh four two. We'd come about it in different ways and kind of came back and found these other numbers. I think we just need a number, or, or, as I proposed, kind of in the written example, to split it between your buildings are going to be factored at one rate, and your other impervious at another rate, it's a little bit more complicated, but we can do it.
Sorry, Mike, where was the point oh four two?
It's not technically written in here, but it, I, and I can always go back and convert it, if you were to look at the parking lot requirements, so the minimum planting for point H, which would be page 360, minimum planting requirement for number three, minimum shall be 40% of the area, so 40% of the parking area, I added the words including aisles and driveways, because it was unclear. But B, each large tree shall be considered to be 1,200 square feet, each medium tree shall be considered to be 600 square feet, so if you kind of take those 1,200 and 600 and go to the 40% parking area, and do all the math on it, it comes out point oh four two. Because I was kind of curious about where the numbers would play out, so. So I knew, you know, like I said, when I did for the existing zoning, if I. So I knew, you know, like I said, when I did for the existing zoning, if I, building perimeters and the requirements, that came out. Point one nine, so that's much higher, so I think, I think we're in a range that could work, it's just gonna be a. Has to be point oh three-three for the ninety percent district.
Because of the very small.
Just because there's very little land that's left for landscaping, so I think that has to be there. So if we're gonna do something, it starts at that, maybe there's just, everybody is this except for that one district. Or ninety percent's this, eighty percent's this, everybody else is something else. I think if, if you want my recommendation, I'm somewhat tempted to go with the point oh three-three and kind of just see how that goes.
As it's written here.
It's a lot cleaner.
It's a lot cleaner, it's a minimum, it's a minimum standard. I think a lot of people are gonna meet it in, I think it's gonna catch the ones we want to catch, the people who don't have any or are really insufficient. It adds a little bit more to a couple of projects that we have all recognized. You know, I think if, if I looked at point oh three-three and it said Caledonian Spirits is good, then I think I would be a little bit more likely to say, I don't know. I think we've all kind of agreed that needed a little bit more landscaping.
On the flip side, though, destruct, like taking the structures into account with the numbers you gave, errors on the side of more trees?
Yeah, it would add more trees, yep. If, if we factored structures at a higher rate, then we would end up with more trees or more landscaping.
Yeah, separating the two seems unnecessarily complicated to me, though, structures from other impervious.
It's more difficult to. To do the, the building than it is for other impervious cover. They do have sort of different characteristics, you know, different aspects to them.
Right.
So I'd never thought about doing it separately, but.
From the public's point of view, they tell you their square footage for their structures and their square footage for their impervious, right?
They just give us impervious.
You tell them the square footage they need for landscaping.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the way it would work.
From the user's perspective.
Right now, we're not asking them to differentiate, we just ask them for an impervious cover. How much of your property is impervious cover? They don't split between the two.
Which either way is still simpler, I think, if there's a way to do it.
Yeah, and, and just for example, the, the, the Caledonia Spirits, we had calculated that the site plan had one thousand six hundred square feet of landscaping. With a point zero three-three on everything, it comes out to two thousand six hundred thirty-five. So they would actually have to add, with that factor, a thousand more. A thousand more square feet, which, again, as we said, with, with that site as empty as it is.
That's what, that's what I needed to hear, to be able to conceptualize like what the point oh three-three means.
Yes, I'm sorry, so that was just the point three-three applied?
Yeah, it's just the, that, yeah, there's no higher factor for the.
For the building.
For the building, yeah.
But ultimately, they need to be able to provide your, with the square footage of the building as well. I mean, maybe not in zoning applications, but for other permit applications.
Yeah, for other reasons, but not for.
So it's not as if you're asking them for information that they don't.
The question that comes up at that point is, once you start having structures, buildings, is where, where, where things fall into the gray area of whether it's a structure or a building of a.
So is your recommendation that all districts and all impervious cover, the factor be point oh three-three?
Yes.
As written here.
It's not, it's not as written here, I would have to amend this. I kind of put the more complex version in here so you could actually visualize it and see it. It's easier to go through and say, we're just gonna strike it all back to number one and, or A and the factor's point zero three-three.
So we get rid of B through D and then the, in districts with maximum cover. A would be changed to just.
Just the factors.
The factors, yeah.
Formal impervious cover?
That's true, yeah.
But so then that removes all the stru- uh, structure pieces.
Yeah.
Right.
So in.
I think you just add this to two, to determine the square footage of planning area that will be required.
Yeah.
Multiply point zero three-three with the square footage of the total.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I, I'm comfortable with that, I mean, it's everyone.
I'm comfortable with that.
And we have this.
Start with simple, if it doesn't work, we go to more complex later.
So where it might not work, it sounds like is in a more rural, larger project, where the point of three-three might. It might stand out because it might be too little landscaping because it's something that's big, it's out somewhere. But in the urban area, it seems like, yeah, because there's already stuff crammed in that the point of three-three's gonna work fine.
Yeah, I think, I think where it will work the least is with somebody who may have a parking lot of nine parking spaces. So they miss out on the point oh four-two. So they end up in the total landscaping and I, I think there's some scenarios which could play out. But again, when we're looking at this, we're trying to look at it as a minimum, and I think a lot of cases come up, people aren't meeting even the point oh three-three minimum. So I think this is already gonna push people up to a higher standard. And I think if we find their examples where it's not, still not being pushed far enough. You know, again, we've already looked at, uh, uh, three projects that were approved under the previous zoning, that each one of which we said, oh, we would have probably wanted to see more different landscaping in those. Whether it was Caledonian Spirits, even Hunger Mountain Co-op could probably, depending on whether they were large trees or medium trees, I think we would have been better about making sure their trees were. More appropriate for shading those parking lots, considering it being replaced.
How does this, um, apply to, say, future developments where, that have no parking?
Like Buddies, oh no.
What's that?
Yeah, like Buddies.
Like Buddies.
Yeah, or, yeah, and, or, you know, as we decrease the amount of impervious cover that we contribute to parking. So that there in that point three, point oh three-three is just applying to the building footprint itself. So in that case, it's lower than what you were proposing here because the point oh three is lower than the.
But I think in those cases, what you would find is, this is the amount that's landscaped. So if you're, if you don't have a parking area and you have, your alternative is you need to have certain amount landscaped, the rest of it's gonna be grass. Because.
Well, we hope so.
It's.
It's not impervious.
It's not impervious and it's not landscaped, it's gotta be something that's kind of falls into. So I think this is really looking at having a arithmetic way of being able to say how many trees and shrubs. So we don't end up with just lawn, we end up with some shade.
I mean, the overall goal is to mitigate the, the surfaces, the urban heat island, right? So that, you know, it depends on, I'm just trying to imagine how that would be affected as we reduce the amount of, of land developed as parking. So, I mean, it could still, could basically come out as a wash. Just want to make sure we don't encourage more parking, that's all.
Yes, and what we didn't want to do is to have the, the factor get, and I mean, if it's decided, it doesn't really matter. We didn't want to have the factor for parking get above the point oh four because you're already meeting, because then we're having to make up more landscaping somewhere else for the impervious cover that's already been taken care of. And so people with a lot of parking lot may end up with lots of additional landscaping somewhere else to make up for the fact that their parking lot landscaping didn't provide enough. So that would be the maximum for the parking lot landscaping is that point oh four-two. But as long as it's point oh three-three, people may have more, we hope people have more. People may have more simply because they meet one of those other requirements under screening. And remember, if there, if you've got a, um, a res- a non-residential next to a residential, you have to provide screening to protect the residential uses that are next door. And you don't get to come into the DRB and saying, yeah, but you guys can only make me plant seven trees because that's all. No, it works the other way around, you do your screening first, then we see if you meet your landscaping requirement, yeah.
Yeah.
And it might encourage you to landscape, to meet your screening with landscaping instead of fencing.
Yes, yeah.
If you have to meet screening anyway.
Yeah, if you already have to meet screening and it gives encouragement for people to support planting street trees, because your street trees count. So.
All right.
Think we're good?
Is everyone comfortable with that approach? We can revisit it if needed.
Yeah, can I just, one quick question, and Mike, I just want to say thanks, this is like a very elegant solution to a sticky problem we've been grappling with the last couple of meetings. And I don't mean to, I don't doubt the rigor with which you've come up with these numbers, but I'm just curious, how many, like, how many models did you crunch or how many hypotheticals did you crunch to come up with the number? I just.
I would say at least. I would say between ten and fifteen different examples of pulling out site plans and counting the trees and what's out there and looking at examples. And, and this has been reviewed by Audra, who is the Assistant Zoning Administrator, and Meredith, who's the zoning administrator, and we've kind of chewed over the different. And they would throw out very specific examples. What about the problem on Berlin Street? We had a big problem on Berlin Street with this particular one, and we would pull it out and say, well, under the old rules, they needed fourteen trees and eighty-seven shrubs, under the new rules, it's this. And they're like, oh, well, that's actually reasonable.
Okay.
That's good.
Yep, thanks.
Anything else in the landscape? Is that it?
No, I think that's, that's it. I can, I'll make these changes, I think the only thing that'd be pending would be what the Tree Board comes up with for that, which I may just have to make a decision on that. If it gets to the City Council and the, and the Tree Board hasn't made a decision, then I guess I would recommend that, that get pulled. But otherwise, I think we would keep it in there for now, or do you guys want me to pull it and add it later? In, because we have two processes, so everyone remembers. We've got this fast track on this one, and then we've got the.
Right.
Second one, I could always go and add that on the second one if we want, the second punch list, so that would just get struck.
I like the placeholder that you put in, I think it's fine.
Okay.
This is on, what, what is?
Three fifty-eight.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it must hypothetically, they don't adopt something consistent with the ANSI standards. I can't imagine that, but I don't.
Well, thank you, we can always recommend a change.
Sure.
Yeah, makes sense.
I think it's, I think it's fine, I think people can, it's something people can follow, and I don't think it's gonna actually cause any administrative snags anyway.
Do I have a motion to forward the revisions to the landscaping and screening section of the zoning with the modifications that we agreed upon tonight to City Council?
So who?
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and the motion carries.
Okay, we have a draft.
Great. All right, so Mike, I think this might be the one, Barb moved, Ariane.
Yes, Barb moved, Ariane seconded.
You're good.
Got it.
That's item five, moving on to item six, because about a half an hour, well, twenty-five minutes, we have to get to our minutes. Last time. So, um, Aaron, I think you're coming into this cold. Uh, the slope, the slope issue. So, um, as part of the punch list of issues with the zoning that was recently passed, Mike brought up this issue of this prohibition on building on slopes, uh, over thirty percent. And it is, there are no exceptions to the rule as written right now.
Wavers.
Wavers. And, and therefore, it, there were certain instances where it was coming up and it didn't necessarily make sense to deny the application. Like when, for example, a retaining wall is being built, that would naturally be a slope higher than thirty percent. So, um, we had some discussion about that and I think there, there's two parts to this. One is the prohibition on slopes, and the second part is the calculation of density. Uh, previously, we, we, the intent was to have that calculation be built on the buildable area on a lot. The proposal that we've received from staff would be to cut that, uh, calculation because the calculation was proving to be administratively, um, very difficult with the data that we have now. That's my understanding of the issue, Mike, is there anything else I missed?
No, that pretty much, the, the, these changes are actually unlike what you just went through. And if anyone doesn't have them, this still has the landscaping on the back half, but if somebody wants to see the, the slope ones. I've just got a couple of these left.
What's the date on that?
All right, uh, well, this was of the eleven-seventh. So the changes here are actually pretty straightforward.
Which page?
So this is kind of a strikeout, so on this page, this just deletes. Under three oh two point C M, there used to be a section in there that would go and say, in all other districts, the maximum residential density shall be based upon the lot's buildable area rather than total acreage or square footage. Which does not include any land with slopes greater than thirty percent as mapped on the attached map. Or wetlands or these other things, so that, in this case, the policy is very. I wouldn't say complicated, it's, it's, um, that's what we're really talking about, rather than wordsmithing, because it really is striking that thing that says we're gonna use buildable area. And then two pages later on three seventeen. The actual changes here go through and it used to say, all development of land in this category is prohibited. And same with the engineered plans, all development on the slope is prohibited. What we've said is, all development shall require a hearing, all development in this land shall require engineered plans. So those are the pretty, I guess the, the, what's changing is pretty straightforward. The question is, should we make that change or not?
Yeah, so staff recommendation was to, um, as far as the buildable area, just to delete that portion, right?
Yes.
And then, uh, as far as the prohibition on building on steep slopes, the recommendation was to, um, make it so that you could build on slopes over thirty percent. If you have, uh, an engineer has provided plans and DRB approval, right?
Yes.
I've read all these things, but I want to make sure I'm getting it accurate.
Yeah, so, so we're not, we're not going through and exempting and not regulating it, we're simply going through and saying, we're taking away the prohibition to go through and say, okay, if you've got an engineer, then, and we have a hearing.
So Barb raised some concerns based on, um, well, there's the two different issues. One is, I mean, and they're tied together because slopes are part of what we've calculated as unbuildable area, they go over thirty.
So if they're unbuildable, then, yeah, yeah.
So, um, yeah, um, but one is that we put forward these proposed density maximums in various districts, uh, to the public and, and propose this. And we were conveying this message that we calculated this with the idea in mind that, um, you would, you would have a maximum for your particular lot based on a buildable area. The actual number that you crunched would be based on that. So we would have the, uh, a really, it's, you know, a lot with a lot of unbuildable area. And then all of the density that you would get if, assuming it was all buildable, kind of cramped in one area. That was the concern, and that's what we expressed to the public. And then the other part of it was, um, with slopes, well, maybe you can articulate your concern with the slopes. I mean, it was, that was, it was that concern and then it gets pulled in with, if the slope's buildable, then no longer unbuildable.
Right, I mean, those two issues can be separated, I think. You know, the question is, is it good practice to build on a slope of thirty percent or more? You know, under, under the regional planning, it's one of the, one of the members of the public brought up to me that the Regional Planning Commission recommends not building on slopes over twenty-five percent. So there is some, you know, there is a rationale that it's not good practice to build on, on steep slopes. So, um, but rather than prohibiting it, then Mike's proposal that just says we, we need engineered plans. The wording as written does. the wording as written does not, you know, you could apply for a waiver, so it doesn't absolutely blanket prohibit any, any development on, on slopes of thirty percent or more, but it just makes it much more difficult to do. So that piece becomes one issue that I think, to my mind, we can separate. My, made my, and I, I see if we keep a tight control on it, then perhaps, you know, this idea of having engineered plans makes sense. It's the other piece that has me more concerned, that if we eliminate what was a kind of, to my mind, a sort of bedrock aspect of how we established the densities in the first place, and say, okay, a site that has a, you know, thirty percent, or twenty-five percent, no, sorry, thirty percent slope, and it's a half an acre, is exactly the same as a, as a site that is a flat site and half an acre, and they should be able to have the same number of units built on them. That's where I think we get, to my mind, into concern. And it brings back some of the example projects that had happened, you know, within the last years, year or so, that were under concern with the public, and particularly the issue of the Sibley Street project. And so I took a look at if we were to say that that site was just, you know, we were allowed, gonna calculate the density based on the total footprint of that site, how many units could we put on it? And how different would that actually be than what was proposed and very strongly reacted to against by the public?
Yeah, so before we get to
Yeah, sorry, into the weeds.
into the substance of it, I, I just wanted, so the planning commission voted to adopt Mike's proposal, staff's proposal, but we also agreed that we should outline Barb's concerns and the risks associated with taking that approach to the city council as we put forward this recommendation. So I asked Mike and Barb if they could draft a memo to city council. We've got two different memos that we can either merge or, well, separately. I would encourage us to, to merge our memos, so that we're speaking as, with one voice. But that's what this discussion tonight is gonna be talking about.
Right.
I mean, how do we wanna do that?
And can, is there, is it possible to come to some kind of a compromise that then we could actually bring forward with, you know, to, at least from my standpoint, with a common voice?
Yeah, well, we can talk about your examples, cause that might help to illustrate. So Barb wrote a memo, and Mike wrote a memo reacting to that, responding to it. So let's talk about, let's, share.
Oh.
Maybe.
Sure. There's another one?
Yeah.
You want one, Kirby?
Sure, thanks.
Starting place, do you, I mean, is there anything that you would wanna change in your memo based on Mike's response?
Well, I think, I mean, for me, it kind of helps to kind of take a step back and say, you know, yeah, we can get into the weeds here. There's a lot of weeds, and his reaction as well as, as my original. But I think the, the point for me is really to look at, what do we want to be able to accomplish with whatever we determine is the best approach? And, and I totally agree that, that as we knew that when we went forward with this zoning, that things were going to come up that were gonna prove to be very difficult to apply. And at least from my standpoint, I think one of the issues had to do with the scale of the development that was being considered. And that, that this thirty percent, or the buildable area issue really comes up to my mind in terms of the, of new multifamily development, not somebody trying to expand an existing house, putting in addition, or, or something like that on. So it really, you know, how could we modify this to apply to that in lieu of?
One of the things that Mike wrote in his, in your memo is that the eliminating that, that buildable area aspect of the density calculations wouldn't allow for any more density than what's on the ground currently? Did I interpret that correctly?
From the zoning standpoint, so when we calculated those district densities that are in our zoning, we didn't remove the buildable area when we figured out what the density should be. We looked at what's actually on the ground. So removing the buildable area will change the amount of building potential from the current zoning, because you're no longer gonna be reducing that amount, but.
Yeah.
That, whether that makes a difference compared to what your neighbors, you know, looking at what's on the ground, from the zoning standpoint, probably not, because the zoning was set up, assuming we had flat buildable area in these neighborhoods. When we found the ninety percent rules, we founded them.
So Barb, what does the buildable area calculation provide that the other size scale massing requirements don't?
Well, because I, I've been thinking about this, that it, to me, one of those elements of character of the neighborhood is, is the fact that historically, we've only built on relatively flat areas of a site. So we are not already building on steep slopes historically. And if we wanna maintain historical development patterns, which I, you know, heard pretty strongly from the public that that was a, a desirable thing to do, that that's one of those aspects that we need to be considering as well. That unfortunately, you know, we wanna say that our other, our, our other pieces, our other requirements define character of the neighborhood, but they really don't. And that was actually the point of my doing the three examples that I did, because we could meet every one of those other criteria that we say are defining character of the neighborhood, but is this really, are, do those developments reflect the character of the neighborhood? Is that?
I'm not following, and I think it's my fault.
No, it's, I'm sorry, let me, let me go back a bit. We had said, or Mike said in his, in his response, that one of the, that we have other ways to make sure that development is consistent with neighborhoods, with the character of neighborhoods. One of them is footprint, one of them is setback, one of them is number of, potentially number of units, scale massing, articulation, all of those aspects. And I guess my feeling is that those are not enough. And that was why I felt strongly that when we instituted the, the piece about buildable area, what that did was it reflected the density of the buildings that were occurring in an existing neighborhood. So it reflected the character of the neighborhood as well, that, 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 as well as all of those other characteristics. So if we remove that one, and say, we remove that criteria, and we are left with just scale, massing, articulation, footprint, all of that, is that enough to maintain the character of the neighborhoods that we feel strongly about? And, so that's why I did the examples, because I feel that it doesn't.
That removing the calculation based on buildable area would result, or end the prohibition on slopes, it's going to result in a change in character of the neighborhood, because the buildings will be built on different slopes, is that?
Not so much the slopes, but the, yeah, if we, again, separate those two issues. So let's set aside being, building on a thirty percent slope. Is it that different from building on a twenty-five percent slope? Probably not, you know. So if we set that piece aside, but it has more to do with the density calculation, and, and the fact that we represented to the public, there were a lot, there was a lot of concern among the public that our densities were too high. And we said, but this is, you know, we, we're, we're going to make sure that any development that happens is consistent with neighborhoods, because we've got this slope exclusion.
But I think what I heard from Mike was that the, the density calculations were calculated without that in mind.
Oh, when the ninety percent rule was, yeah.
Right.
But that was what people were coming up against and saying.
So people were upset about the densities that we proposed, even though they reflect what's on the ground?
What, that technically, they, technically, they reflect what's on the ground, because it's
I remember very well, because I
It's an average, yeah, right, it's an average. So we were saying that we have this extra step that, that came into the process to ensure that, that overdevelopment does not happen.
So my understanding of that piece of the process, and Kirby, were you with us at this point?
I was, I was there near the end when this happened, what you're talking about.
Well, let me give my perspective, and then you can add yours or correct me. But, cause I'm still not sleeping well, and I just, my recollection is not as strong, my strong suit right now. But my, my recollection is that we assured the public that the buildable area being taken into account would prevent a really out of scale building from popping up in a neighborhood, you know, because everyone could just group, you could just group your density in a one little corner of your parcel, and then you would have this giant building. And then we developed the other requirements, the scale size, massing, footprint, and I, my thought was that that got at the issue. So that was, that was my understanding.
My understanding was, was the same thing, that we have all of these, these other requirements that are getting at the character of the neighborhood issue, which is what people are, at the heart of it, the public was concerned about the character of the neighborhood changing, and density that's allowing distances, densities that are too high would change their character of their neighborhood. So density became a proxy for character of the neighborhood. And John Adams has convinced me at this point, cause he's talked about this a lot, and, and others that I've, that I've, that I've heard talk about this that are with a planning background, have convinced me at this point to say that density is really, it's a red herring as far as for character of the neighborhood. It's easy for people, cause it's a number, it's easy for people to tap, to look at density and say, "That's gonna determine what my neighborhood's like", but really, it's all the other rules that we have in place that determine what your neighborhood's like. And density is just, this looking in the wrong direction. And that's kind of like where, but when, when this, when this conversation played out, that's kind of where I ended up personally on it, was realizing, cause at the beginning, I too was thought that density had a lot of importance, and now I realize it's actually a pretty poor proxy for character of the neighborhood.
Why?
It dictates the number of people that can
It's like, it's like, you're, 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 yeah, the number of units that are allowed on a parcel, you know?
Yeah.
So it could be this beautiful old Victorian
That gets split up into five units, but looks exactly the same.
Yeah.
And so that's, you know, it's no different, character wise.
Victorian could get split into
And there might be, there might be more humans around, but.
But actually, yeah, but you would, I'm sorry.
It might have parking, it might have some other, but, but we have our setback rules, we have a lot of zoning rules that just kind of put a, another, like a real check on, you, it's very difficult to reach maximum density on any, any parcel. And, and the reason why we increased the amounts is basically this Mike determined that we're out of conformance anyway. We're like way over the old density requirements in all our neighborhoods. So we were just changed it to reflect reality. So, so that's what I remember.
The ninety percent rule was, this test was done, so if ninety percent of the parcels in this district would be in conformance with this density, then that seems like that's a good gauge for where we are now, what we wanna maintain.
Yeah, but I guess I would argue with, you know, with Kirby's assertion that, that the number of housing units has no influence on the character of the neighborhood, because it definitely does. I mean, even, I'll tell you that my, my neighbors know that I have a two-family house, not just a one-family house. It's, and it's really, and if I then suddenly took my house and changed it into five units, that would have a significant impact on my neighborhood, which is mostly one and two-family houses. So that
And I, I think my reply to that in the memo was that, that really, really, really sounds like a proposal to amend the use table, not, I mean, we, we keep getting off on this buildable area. You know, this, this is, I mean, this is, this is her parcel, and I have to calculate her density on, on that slope map, and it's, it's just
Oh, it's a slope map, okay.
That's a slope map. All the red is slopes, the darkest red is the slopes that are over, over thirty percent. So it really becomes, you know, how do you calculate such a, such a number so we can enforce and administer those rules without having a large test? But really, if, if the concern is having a multifamily will change the character of my neighborhood, right now, multifamily is either a permitted or a conditional use, then the proposal should be, the problem isn't the fact that somebody's gonna have a five thousand square foot house, it's that they're gonna have a five thousand square foot house that's been broken into five or more units. Cause it's, if your concern is five or more units is the problem, then change the use table to go and say, "You can't have multifamily housing in this neighborhood", not, let's, let's try to adjust the buildable area to the point that somebody can't, you know, if, if it turns out that most of Barb's parcel is twenty-five percent slopes, it's all gonna be buildable, and she can build it there, and officially, you'd be saying, "Yeah, that's fine, as long as it's twenty-five percent slope, it's okay that I have eight units", but if that's thirty percent, then it's not okay for me to have eight units.
Well, I know it's an arbitrary number, but it was a number that we could, we determined was at least a reasonable level. And at least some portions of that site will be over thirty percent. So that would automatically reduce the three-quarter acre that exists now in terms of buildable area. If, so the sketches that I did, which I don't know if anybody actually saw,
Yeah.
had to do with whether, you know, what the actual effects of that would be. And I'll show this to Aaron, because I don't know if you saw this.
Yeah, I think that's part of this, it's a, depending to the memo, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the issue being that, you know, given if that entire three-quarter parcel, three-quarter acre parcel was considered, and if we allowed a density bonus, because it would be really easy to make it an infill PUD, then it would be possible to end up having a significant number of units, eight units on a site that is currently two, surrounded by, as you'll see, the, the numbers on the building surrounding it are the number of, of housing units in the neighborhood. And the, any of that development that's indicated there would meet any of the setback, footprint, any of the other required parking as well, requirements. And what I'm saying is that, to my mind, that is too dense. It doesn't reflect, you know, without that, if, if, it would, basically, if it went, if the slope exclusion was ignored, then about three units, you know, it would, it would bring it down to four units.
Barb, does, does this comply with all the setbacks?
Mm-hmm, yep, footprint, yeah, the whole nine yards. And it's a twenty-five hundred square foot footprint, so two units per floor, you could end up with four units. And as you see, looking at the massing of the building, it's not that different from the two adjacent properties just down the street. So it's not as if it's a, it's totally out of scale. So I think, you know, so that's sort of where I started, was, okay, does this, does it really make a difference, what we're trying to accomplish here? And I think it does. I mean, I think it has a serious impact, because historically, the whole three-quarters of an acre would never have been built on, because it was a steep slope. Technically, now we could, of course, we could build on, on the back portion of that. But historically, it would not have been. That's why all the houses are along the street in, in the relatively flat areas. Most of these sites in the back half of them do, in fact, have significant slopes on them. And as I pointed out before, I mean, I recognize that, that administratively, Mike would like to be able to tell people, you know, oh, you're, you know, what their slope percentage is, but if somebody's going to be doing a development like this Um, but if somebody's going to be doing a development like this, they would need to be getting an engineered plan in the first place. And so any engineer, even any site um designer would be able to come up and, eh, with the percentage that's over thirty percent.
And I think it works in that situation, but I think the issue administratively is that for any sort of addition or porch or, I mean, you'd have to get an engineer to help Mike know your buildable area.
Well, that, and that, I think that's my point is that it's, to me, it, it's more significant in terms of if we're increasing the number of, of units on the property, not just if we're adding on to an existing. It, yeah, using it as a density designation.
Right, so I think I mean that- What if you're increasing the number of units, but you're not changing the building at all? Or, I mean, or if you're adding in as small features that you want?
Yeah, yeah, well then, yeah, but you're not changing the external appearance of the- Well, I still think that there, you know, is, I mean, there's certainly a cost associated with that. There's a benefit to the property owner to add an additional unit to an existing building. So the, and uh to ask them to do a site plan is not unreasonable. And in some cases, might already have to provide a site plan. So I, that's why I, I'm not sure that I understand that the requirement for having an engineer involved, um, who could then designate what was thirty percent or greater.
So I think I'm better understanding this question about whether the use table should, is the better, I mean, it, it sounds like there's a question of how to deal with this issue of character of the neighborhood and whether it's gonna be through density calculations, what uses are allowed, um-
But it's also a direct decision to be made, which I think is what I pointed out in the memo, which was that, in, in her example, the only way she could do her example with that many, that much was to do a PUD, which would mean it would have to be, as we pointed out, the only way you should be able to exceed our densities is if it was a well-designed project. We spent a year or more working on our PUD standards. To death. Um, but for, to be what she proposed, it would have to be a well-designed senior housing living facility that will provide perpetually affordable housing units in hers rated facilities with a score less than fifty. Then you would be able to apply to get up to eight units. So it's not like everybody walking in gets to go and get this. You'd have to have a well-designed project, two public hearings. Character of the neighborhood and traffic are actual requirements. So if it doesn't meet character of the neighborhood, the neighbors are gonna have an opportunity to, to discuss this point.
But they're not, those are not criteria that are that difficult to meet frankly. I mean, you know, a lot, most new buildings are gonna meet the hers rating and um, you know, it's, it's not-
Perpetually affordable is more challenging than you guys think.
That's right, that's not one that I would necessarily choose, you know?
Oh, you-
There is, there are eight different criteria to choose from.
So you would only have to do one of those, the hers, well, not that this is-
Two, three, I think it's three.
Two or three of them, I don't remember which one it is for that one.
So, um, yeah, so the particular criteria, um, I mean, we were trying to allow a lot of flexibility.
Okay.
So it's, uh, yeah, so perpetually affordable was not gonna be one of them, but eighty-eight, you know, accessible? Yes, you know, that kind of thing.
So you have to do two of those to get a twenty-five percent bonus, density bonus, or three to get a fifty percent bonus, and that's in the next yellow.
And out of the eight.
So, I mean, the affordable-
Two of the following, I see.
So, yeah, I mean, we just, I just want, this, we're gonna throw an outline, yeah.
But, yeah, if it's, yeah, but if it gets to a point where it's, it's, if, again, if it's to the point where under no circumstances, so in other words, even if a hers rated senior facility with perpetually affordable housing is unacceptable, this still is not a buildable area question. This is, it absolutely shouldn't be allowed anywhere. If we're not gonna allow it for a hers rating senior facility perpetually affordable, then, then it should just change the use table to say we're not gonna allow it in that neighborhood. And, and otherwise, we're just-
Not gonna allow what in that neighborhood?
Multifamily housing. If you're gonna say you don't want a senior housing facility that's perpetually affordable and hers rated the best that we can do and you still are gonna oppose that, it's just not a use that you think should be allowed in the district. And the rest of it is just a red herring, that it's the buildable area that's the issue. It's not the buildable area that's the issue, it's the fact that it's multifamily.
No, I don't think, that's, that's not the way I see it, is that, and no, I don't have any problem with multifamily if there was enough site area that was flat, that was reasonably, uh, that it could accommodate that level of development, that number of units. So to me, it's not about the use, it's about the appropriateness of the development within the neighborhood.
Moves across the street, eh, where it's a little flatter, if I recall Liberty well enough. Not quite as steep as your backyard, right?
No, it's steep over here too, so-
There's not a little bit more flat, let's hypothetically, hypothetically, let's say, let's say, let's say it is across the street and that it's, the slope issue's taken out of it. So you'd be fine with the eight units going in and that same-
Well, there is, there are um properties down the street where there are flatter, you know, that's-
Yeah, I used to live in one of them.
Yeah, the, the one on, across the street that has, I think, five units in it. And that's a, you know, it's a, it's-
On the corner of Liberty and Loomis, there's a six unit that I used to live in and then across from that, which is also in the corner of Liberty and Loomis, a different corner, there's, I don't have any units around there, it's huge.
There's only, I think there are only five or six in that one too, yeah, yeah.
It's only five or six in that one. Um, yes, I know, I know, I know that that's, that is, part of the neighborhood is large multifamily, uh, units.
Yeah, except that that's not, that's not in the same district. That's not in our res six thousand, it's in res three thousand.
The corner of Liberty and Loomis is in a different one?
Yeah, cause this is the line, this is the dark line here, is the dividing point.
Oh, oh, you live on the dividing line.
Yeah, I do, sorry, I do, yeah.
So without the bonuses, fewer units would be able to be built on that side of the line?
More units.
No, she, without the density bonus, yes, yes, right, yeah.
Fewer on her side, without that.
Fewer on her side.
Um, right, but more on my neighbor's side, by the way.
Right.
Who has a bigger flat area now. So, um, just because they're in res three thousand. So, you know, that's the kind of thing that I think, to me, it, this whole issue of buildable area reflects a characteristic of the neighborhood. So if we have a different way that we can get to that point without, you know, using buildable area as that criteria, then I'd be fine with doing that. It's just that somehow, we need to be able, I mean, because people value the historic character of our neighborhoods, that's why they wanna move here, how do we retain those characteristics while still allowing for additional infill development?
So what's the, I'm sorry, what's the core characteristic that you're seeking to preserve? Cause that's what I'm, I'm not quite understand.
The characteristic of the neighborhood having to do with the um pattern of development and the-
Specifically what?
Specifically along the street, the streetscape. Um, you know, we could say, you know, there's a certain pattern, there's a cer- certain size, which, and some of those elements are reflected in other uh criteria, such as footprint and setback and, and articulation and our other arch- architectural criteria. But other elements of the building pattern that has developed over time, it's sort of like what, what Kirby and I were just talking about. You know, as you move through down a street, the development pattern changes.
Right.
And appropriately, what happens is that the um particular district that those properties are in changes as well. But historically, what's been reflected um is not what we're proposing could be built now. And, and I think that what we're proposing is a significant change to what has historically developed and-
And I, I feel a little dense, cause I'm still not understanding either. I mean, Aaron's question is, is hitting at it for me, cause what I see as the only thing that we're giving up is regulating the, the u- the number of people. And that's, that's why I feel so, I mean, I feel like we've got all of the external um regulations to ensure that buildings are near the street, facing, that their front doors are facing the street, that they have consistent scale massing. And I just get really concerned about saying that a certain number of people in a home reflects the character of the neighborhood and that's, that's what I'm-
No, I don't, yeah, I, and I don't think that that's, it, it may, it, the number of family units, you might, is basically what you're saying, you're not really saying number of people necessarily.
Yes, right.
Um, and, and I, you know, I agree that we can increase the number of family units. We can increase the number of family units in existing buildings and essentially have very little impact on the character of the neighborhood, which is what we were discussing earlier. That has minimal impact. But once we start looking at infill development, we have to be much more careful about that in terms of what's the impact, um, and you-
And that's why we have all of those design standards to ensure that-
Right, well, I mean, we, you know, I, my other example was the, was the Sibley Street. And, and I met every single one of the setbacks, articulation and, and footprint and still ended up with, you know, I can't remember now, twelve, fourteen units. Um, twelve, yeah. Um, and those twelve units could be built if you consider the entire property and um, eh, and don't exclude the thirty percent slope of which there is a significant amount on that, on that property.
So we're running out of time, do you have one more follow-up question and then a quick reminder?
No, I, I, I mean, I, I-
We are out of time, actually, so I'm gonna, um-
Thanks, Leslie.
I think, first I wanna know, do the commissioners wanna reopen this discussion? I mean, there was a vote, there was a decision. Do we wanna reopen that decision and continue this discussion um at future meetings? That's the first question. The second question is, if the answer is no, how do we want to move forward with preparing a memo for city council? So, I just wanna mention both parts to that question.
Guys, a, a point of clarification first.
Yeah.
Um, the decision that we are looking to reconsider is specifically what?
Yes.
I think it's like, so, oh.
Go ahead.
Is it, is it the, the three thousand two C change and the-
Which, what was this three thousand two, I don't have that.
One is double, the C is the buildable area one.
The buildable area.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the later one is the development on slopes.
Yeah, the two that Mike, that Mike teed up at the beginning of the discussion.
So the decision was to um recommend to city council that we eliminate the
That's-
Billable area, ca- uh, so the density calculation's based on buildable area.
Okay, so that's the three thousand two C and then this oth- and then this other, the-
Yes, and then-
The hearing threshold, so-
Well, yeah, and then we would allow for some buildings on slopes.
Okay.
Of requiring engineering.
With, engineering, yeah, yeah.
And designer review board.
Okay.
Development review board, cause there's a designer review board.
Yeah, yeah.
Make sure we-
It's amusing.
So that's, that was the decision.
Yep.
And then um I asked for memos to be drafted and, and so that's whether this uh point in time. So, um do people wanna reopen the discussion to see if there's a different substantive um solution, if you re- I know Barb does. I know she'll vote positively on that, but are others interested in that or? The reason why I ask it like this in a formal way is because we've, we've talked about this a lot. We've had an affirmative vote and I think it's important that we be conscious of our time. If we've had a vote and other people don't wanna continue the discussion, then I wanna respect that and, and move forward and we can draft a memo that cautions the city council of the risk of adopting this approach. I think that's perfectly reasonable solution. But if people do wanna revisit this and have a little bit more background information, since not everybody on the commission was there for all of the public hearings leading up to the zoning adoption, then, you know, that's certainly a welcome uh way to move forward too.
Uh, another point of clarification, uh, the vote that we took, that we, uh-
Do you weren't a part of?
That I was not a part of, does that include a requirement that we send memos to the city council?
It did not at that time.
No.
No, that's not something we needed to vote on.
Yeah, I think it was more, we decided as a group that it made sense to, I mean, generally speaking, when we submit recommendations to the city council, Mike usually puts together a memo and presents, here's why we've put these together. Uh, in this one, we felt the need to be a little bit more involved in, in drafting of, in this particular recommendation. Uh, especially since, you know, Barb's concerns are shared by others um in the public and-
Hmm, that's fair. For, for me, I'm not finding that I'm like moving in my like point of view on it, but I thought it was important for Barb to be able to have a platform.
Thanks.
So, so I'm satisfied that, that she's able to plead her case at this point would probably be in favor of moving it to city council.
I'm the same vote.
Any differing opinions?
I'm gonna abstain.
Understandable, Aaron, really.
Okay, well, hearing none, um, here's what I propose. Um, I'm gonna nominate Kirby to try to interweave these memos a little bit, the points of view. And then to get Barb and Mike to review and sign off on that, is that?
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
You're being well and told to do that?
We, we use both semi-electronic versions of your memos. I mean, I probably already have them, but the latest electronic version of your memo, word document?
You do have it.
But it's in Word, you can, you can actually take, take a memory.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a Word version of it in my email?
Yeah, you should have a Word version of it, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll say, I don't know if I sent PDFs or Words.
And then Kirby, do you think you could, you could do that so that we could discuss it at the January fourteenth meeting?
Yeah.
A little something to do over the holidays, Kirby.
And if not, we can move it back, but just, just to give us kind of goalposts here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and then Barb, I also wanna mention that you have said that different members of the public have concerns. They should absolutely submit their comments or come in and, and provide them verbally, um, because maybe there is something in their nuance. Maybe they'll say it in a way that it's, they'll understand it differently.
Well, I don't, you know, based on what they've said to me, um, you know, I think that they're-
We've captured everything?
We've captured everything, right, yeah.
So, so, one clarification, we've, we've got the landscaping moving forward, so that can get fixed.
Yes.
If this is waiting till January, it's gonna miss the window for the adoption of that one. Did we want to? Is the, excluding the, the buildable areas piece, I mean, cause, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's the buildable areas piece that's really your concern. We could move forward the other two piece, the other piece that goes through on the table, adjusting the table, say you can build over thirty percent with a hearing and engineering.
And flipping those t- there was something about flipping the tables, right, yeah.
And flipping the tables, yeah, it's, it's the strikeout version.
If you're comfortable with that, Barb, then I think that-
Yeah.
Then there's an alternative, at least I can start going up and getting that to change and we s- we've- And if the buildable areas ends up on the long adoption list, then it ends up on the long adoption list. But that's up to you guys to decide whether you wanna move buildable area forward. But I would at least go and move the, the engineered thirty percent stuff.
Yeah, if we can do that, I would-
Yeah, I mean, that would still require an engineer to be involved, but it would in the way.
Yeah, and we have engineers downstairs who do our reviews. I mean, just as, there's stuff downstairs right now for proposals on College Street that can't get building permits until they get approval from engineers downstairs. But that would, that would move those two forward and, and leave the buildable areas question as a separate item.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to move the staff recommendation for the steep slope part of the zoning to city council with the landscaping?
That, the steep slope aspect of the build, um, allowing building um areas of thirty percent?
Yes, yes.
Right, cause a steep slope is two parts.
Right, fair enough.
Not, not sure that was clarified, but anyway, yeah.
So I'll withdraw and restate the motion, the motion on secret.
All right.
Try, we're trying to make it easy for everyone else, rather than say, give me a motion, you come up with it. But Barb, you wanna make the motion, what do you-
The, how about the amendments to section three zero zero seven?
Okay.
Which is the steep slopes.
Zero zero seven, okay, so do I have a motion to recommend to city council this- the staff recommendations for the revisions to 3007, steep slopes?
That prohibited construction on slopes of thirty percent.
Yes.
To amend that section, yeah.
Those are the only changes to sections 3007. The other changes are in 3002.
Two, right.
So the only changes in 3007 are to the, to that table that prohibited.
Yeah, okay, and, and the areas? I guess I'd forgotten we did square footage area changes, too.
Yeah, well, that was why, just for simplicity of the motion, I said the changes that were proposed to 3007.
Okay, all right.
Then it encompassed some of those minor.
Okay, do I have such a motion? I will move that motion.
Whatever that motion was.
Second, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay, so the motion carries. That is item six, we're gonna go skip item seven, item eight, quickly, let's look at the minutes. I just like to keep track of these.
There is, Aaron's name is still wrong in one spot.
Got two, got two of the three.
We're getting there.
Yeah, I make, I usually make these fixes, so.
Okay, okay. Anything else, please? Okay.
The move we approve.
I'm a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries, minutes are approved. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for all your help, this is complicated.